I'd like to start off by welcoming our council member for Ward 6, Francois Borgen. This is Herd Town Hall, and so she's going to be leading the lion's share of the information that I think all of you are interested in here. But we also, before I turn it over to her, also want to call attention that we have one of our City Council at-large members, Bob Legere, up here on the second row. Bob, would you? With that being said, I can't tell you how much it's pleasing to us to see your interests in your local government. This is the second time that Francois has come out to hold one of our Herd Town Halls here in this facility, and both times you have shown up in these numbers. That says a lot to her because, quite honestly, with all the noise that's happening back in Washington DC, the streets, and certainly the traffic safety devices, and all the things that impact us on a daily basis, happen right here in the city of Aurora. And with people like Francois and Bob here, it shows them about your interest in their commitment to being of service. So, one more time, let's welcome Francois and Bob Legere.
Well, thank you, everyone. It's always a pleasure to be here at Heritage Eagle Bend, so I appreciate you coming out this evening. And I see a few people in the back. Just so you know, there are some open chairs in the front, so don't be shy. I just want to give you an idea of what the agenda will look like for tonight. So, we'll start with just a brief history on the traffic study, and then we'll go into a presentation by the Public Works and our consulting firm, Kimley Horn, and then we'll open it up for questions at that point, specifically for that subject. Okay, so the overview, basically, of the traffic study timeline, for those of you that maybe haven't been following along with all the different meetings and everything. We started our discussions back in July, and that started, basically, with Heritage Eagle Bend and the Eagle Bend Metro District. And from that, as you know, we had a huge turnout at our September Budget Input Meeting from the public. So, I want to, again, thank you for that tremendous turnout. I think a lot of people were surprised that buses were showing up with people from Heritage Eagle Bend. What was important about that is it really brought to the attention the importance of this issue and how much it meant to this community. So, it was really instrumental in helping us move forward. Following that, we had a budget workshop, council members did, and at that particular workshop, I was able to secure $250,000 as a set aside for a potential traffic device solution. So, I want to thank my fellow council members for voting on that. Then we moved into some meetings with Public Works, and that proceeded to hiring our consulting firm, Kimley Horn. And they began doing some of the initial studies. You may have seen them out in the area, doing their studies. We then, and this is over a period of time, obviously, but we then met with them, with the Heritage Eagle Board, as well as the Eagle Metro District Board, and were able to get the findings directly from Kimley Horn. From that particular meeting, of course, we had questions, and they took those questions and then put together the final analysis. So, December, that was when we had the final findings. And so, that, basically, has brought us to this point with the presentation to you tonight. And so, I am now going to turn it over to Public Works, and we have Dave Chambers and Cindy Collop here. Dave Chambers is the Director of our Public Works, and we appreciate all the work that both of them and their staff has done.
My name is Cindy Collop, and I'm the Transportation Projects Delivery Manager for the City of Aurora. And I'm the person that got the email that evening as you were leaving on your buses. So, here I am. What we did is we hired Kimley Horn and Associates. Curtis Rowe and Chris Hopkins are here tonight to help us with this study in the accelerated fashion that we wanted to meet. So, obviously, you came on the buses to counsel, and we heard you. And what we heard is, number one, there's concerns about the speed along Gartrill. There's concerns about the traffic growth, not only because of the development that's outstanding that'll come your way, but also because there's been some changes to that development. Gartrill Road splits the community in half. And the last thing we heard is that the boards really wanted to partner with us on that study. So, kind of a repeat, but we hired Kimley Horn. We then met with the board representatives in late September to scope the project so that we could make sure we met all the needs. And then, finally, Kimley Horn has been working on and have completed the alternatives analysis. Bear with me, I have big maps, but... So, to kind of talk to you about the study limits, here's E-470. We've got Gartrill, and obviously, there's Heritage Eagle Bend and the golf course. We needed to look at this holistically and make it a comprehensive review because there's a lot of developments still to occur in the area. So, what the study entailed was actually going all the way from Aurora Parkway down to Inspiration Lane. Some of the data collection that we did, part of what we heard from you, speeds, so we collected speed data. We actually looked at four different locations. We also collected volumes, and then we also looked at the site distance for the area. This is a handout that you have, and what we wanted to highlight here, and thought it might be easiest if you had to look at it in your hand, is Heritage Eagle Bend, E-470, Gartrill again, Heritage Eagle Bend in the yellow, but the red is the remaining development that's going to occur around Heritage Eagle Bend. Based on the information that Kimley Horn looked at and studied, it's estimated right now that that might be completed by 2025. Okay? Eight years away. My son will just be in college. Scary. Okay. So, what did the information about the remaining developments tell us? Well, we collected existing traffic. Right now, you have about 10,000 vehicles per day. That's an average weekday, 24 hours. Most of those vehicles are during the main portion of the day, but when you're trying to access Gartrill, there's about 10,000 vehicles that would flow in that 24-hour period. But what we found is, in 2025, that's going to more than double. So, probably about two and a half times what's there today. The other thing that that tells us is that Gartrill, as a four-lane section, is appropriate. I think that there had been some previous discussions about maybe reducing the lanes on Gartrill, but this information tells us that would not be an appropriate solution. Thank you. I'm kidding. I'm joking, totally. Okay. I also mentioned that we collected speed data. The posted speed limit on Gartrill is 40 miles an hour. We looked at four locations. I specifically wanted to highlight here at Heritage Eagle Bend, on each side, the measured speed was between 47 and 49 miles an hour. So, yes, people are traveling fast. Closer to Aurora Parkway, similar findings. It's in the 47, 48 mile-per-hour range. Down at Inspiration Lane, it actually drops to, I think, about 42 miles per hour. So, that was an interesting finding. Okay? Yeah. All right. So, I've talked to you a little bit about the remaining development, what the impacts are to the future volumes on Gartrill. We've talked a little bit about the speeds, and now I'm going to have Kimley Horn, Curtis Rowe, he's going to talk a little bit about the site distance concerns, as well as the alternatives that they looked at in a real broad sense.
Thank you, Cindy. Again, I'm Curtis Rowe with Kimley Horn. Very happy to be here tonight. Pleased to work with the community on this study. I appreciate you all bringing this to the attention to the City of Aurora because that created a project for us, and it's been a great project. So, thank you. But moving into the site distance, as Cindy had mentioned, since traffic is traveling at 48 miles per hour, we really need to look at improving sight lines so that traffic today can turn out from Heritage Parkway onto Gartrill Road. And so, what these triangular lines show here is the amount of distance down the street that needs to be clear, that you need to be able to see. And so, based upon the curvature of Gartrill Road, plus all of the landscaping in the median, I think there are some site distance improvements that we can do in the interim or near term, revisit the landscaping there so that we can improve the distance. And so, this is the clubhouse side, and so, traffic exiting, turning left, needs to be able to see to the right. And so, you know, there's some landscaping there. This corner is fairly clear, and so, that actually is a benefit. We noticed from the other side of Heritage Parkway, anybody trying to turn left out of there even has a more difficult time because of the landscaping here on the corner of the road, and so, that will be some further evaluation that we need to do to improve site distance. When we presented this information to the city and the board, it was mentioned that we should look at more intersections in the community and the area, and so, we're actually doing this same assessment for about eight intersections within Heritage Eagle Bend. And so, that's what services that are ongoing. So, as Cindy mentioned, we evaluated several different alternatives. If you can't read them, I'll read them off for you here, but the alternatives are listed here on the top. So, whenever we evaluate a condition, we always consider do nothing, just to compare it, so we have an apples-to-apples comparison. And so, this alternative is no build. The second one that we studied, always stop control, that would be putting stop signs up on Gartrill Road in addition to the ones that exist today already on Heritage Parkway. The third is installing a traffic signal. The fourth was a two-lane roundabout. We did evaluate a single-lane roundabout to see if that would work, and unfortunately, there's just too much traffic on Gartrill, so that wouldn't provide enough capacity. Then, these next two alternatives were some restricted turning movements. It was, what if we don't have a left turn at this intersection? You know, what does that do to the traffic movements? It may improve safety, but it has issues relative to access. And then, the last one was a grade separation, similar to what you see, like, at E-470, bridges over the freeway, so, you know, it's very intrusive. So, we evaluated all of those alternatives on several different evaluation measures or criteria, and we grouped them by safety, operations, access, property impacts, and construction cost. And so, when we put everything into the matrix, into the machine, we saw that signal control and two-lane roundabout actually improves safety. It also improves operations. Access is good, you know, so does the no-build alternative and always-stop control. However, the always-stop control condition, we actually determined that it would not be warranted. There's too much traffic on Gartrill. The speed on Gartrill is too high. It wouldn't meet driver expectations to install stop signs on Gartrill Road, and so, therefore, it would actually be a less safe condition to have always-stop control installed there. And that's why that represented in a better condition versus best. Property impacts, you know, signal would be good from that standpoint. Roundabout has some, especially to entrance gates. And then, construction costs. And so, that's where, you know, like, grade separation and some of those things kind of fell out. So, we put all of it in the machine and did the evaluation, and now Cindy's here to present our recommendation.
But I have to do one thing before I do that. If you did not get a three-and-a-half-by-five note card, those are for questions. And if you have a question that you would like to have asked tonight, raise your hand if you have one, and you don't have a three-and-a-half-by-five card, and we'll get you one. And then, if you could write your questions down, Steve's going to filter those at the end of the presentation so we can make sure to address everything. Okay, so Curtis talked about looking at a range of alternatives. He also, he didn't mention, but he also did another really smart thing. You guys had a signal warrant analysis done over the summertime, and Curtis went back and looked at those volumes, and that accounted for the golf course activity and the functions here during the summer. And when he compares those with the projected volumes on Gartrill, it looks like the traffic signal would be, meet the engineering criteria by 2020. So, summertime traffic, both on Gartrill and out of Heritage Eagle Bend, plus the speeds, looks like a signal warranted by 2020. So, here's what we want to do. We would like to go ahead and get that signal under design with the plans to have it installed by the end of 2018. There's a reason. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of the technical issues that we have out there. This intersection, you have your pedestrian underpass, the golf cart underpass, very close to the Heritage Parkway intersection. We're going to need to look at the plans for this and evaluate that if we have to, when we place the traffic signal poles here and here, that they would not undermine the pedestrian overpass. It may turn out that we have to do additional work on this side so that we can make sure to accommodate the caisson. Traffic signal caissons can go anywhere from 12 to 20 feet into the ground. So, we do have some real concerns about that pedestrian underpass. The other thing, besides this technical evaluation, is also there's, we have our contracting and purchasing process. We're going to put out what we call a request for proposal to engineers to do the design, but the other side of it is our equipment lead time. And I thought the easiest way to talk about it might be with a picture. Smoky Hill and Aurora Parkway, I think that's the back of the Lowe's, if anybody goes there. I know I do. These two cabinets here, this one runs the traffic signal. It's basically the brains. And those cabinets are intersection-specific. So, we have to order that, and then it has to be detailed out, basically, per intersection. The other cabinet here is just a battery backup. Those are pretty off-the-shelf, but not a huge deal, but there is a lead time with those. I mentioned that the caisson can be 12 to 20 feet deep, and then, we have to place the caisson and then figure out how long these mast arms need to be. And after we do that, the lead time on the poles and mast arms and the cabinets can be anywhere from six to nine months. So, that's why we're looking towards later in 2018 to get the traffic signal installed. We also have a lot of underground work, because you never know what you're going to come up with under these roads. So, all of that combined, what we're looking at is to proceed with the design, get that under contract. In the meantime, Kimley Horn's going to review the site distance concerns through the community. We'll hire a design firm to produce the plans. We're going to bid it out, then, and hire a contractor. In the meantime, we're going to work through agreements with the Eagle Bend Metro District Board for funding, and then traffic signal installation by the end of 2018. So, we did have some proposed interim improvements that we'd like to do in the meantime, and that includes, we're in the process of ordering and getting these radar speed signs installed. It will actually, it'll tell you posted speed is 40, your speed is 49, probably, right? Somewhere in there. And these will be placed on both approaches to Heritage Eagle Bend. Right now, we're looking at sometime in the second quarter to get those. They're in the process of working through the details right now.
There's a couple of things that Cindy touched on in her presentation, and Curtis, is that the sight line distance obstacles is the way that the landscape on the median is actually owned and managed by the Metro District Board. Really, George Aralano, I saw him here earlier, that's one of George's primary responsibilities, is to work with the median. Now, you also saw on the northeast corner coming out from the east side onto Gartrill that we have some sight line impediments on that intersection as well. But between what we are going to do and what the Metro Board is going to do in the spring, we're going to contract with a landscape architect to begin to address those. Because I know you couldn't see this graphic well, but what is shown in those slides are where we would need to be at 30 miles, 40 miles, and 50 miles an hour. Obviously, we need to go out to the 50-mile-an-hour sight line, and we will be addressing that this spring. The other thing that was not touched on in detail is that, unlike the speed indicators that we own here in the community, the ones that they're going to be placing has the smart data collection point that will allow us to capture what are the speeds out there and so forth. Whereas it's a totally different department than Public Works that Dave Chambers heads up, we will certainly, through our representatives, be requesting enforcement through the Aurora Police Department to come out here on a recurring basis, based upon that data. Is hope more noise abatement for E-470 and what's going in at this intersection?
Okay. Here's the picture of Francois. Is this area correct? Okay. Well, I think that is the storage units, if, or it could be the apartments also. Oh, the KB home duplexes, okay. Right. Yeah, those have been approved, so... And I know that there's been some other ones that, like, the senior homes are not, they're delayed right now, so, yeah, yeah. Okay, and then the noise. So, on E-470, they, did you write me about that? Okay, somebody else did. They are addressing some of the noise abatement with some sound barriers, so a lot of it could be landscaping or walls. And if you go to the e470.com website, they actually have now uploaded all the areas where they are doing noise abatement along the E-470 corridor. So, some of it is in our area, and some of it is, of course, further north by the Tollgate Community. But I know that they definitely have some. It may not be, you know, exactly where you want it to be, but they definitely have that uploaded on the website.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Cindy, this question's for you. That mic should be hot. Oh, you've got one. Says, "How effective are the speed limit radar signs in reducing the speed on Gartrill?"
I don't think we know that yet. I can tell you that studies have shown that they have limited effectiveness, but when they're combined with enforcement, the effectiveness goes up. So, that's why... Enforcement helps, doesn't it? So, that's why part of these interim improvements is not only to install the radar speed signs, but to request additional enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Next question is for, I suppose, Cindy. "Will traffic signal controlling exit from HEB be traffic actuated, or pressure plate, if you will, so as to leave Gartrill green when there is no existing HEB traffic?"
Yeah, when there's no traffic coming out of Heritage Eagle Bend, there will, it shouldn't be green. We programmed those to be coordinated, and since we're going to, since we already have a signal at Aurora Parkway, it'll need to be coordinated with the Heritage Eagle Bend, but unless there's a vehicle exiting Heritage Eagle Bend, it'll remain green on Gartrill.
Okay, good question. "What other intersections are you going to be looking at?"
We looked at Aurora Parkway and Gartrill, Heritage Eagle Bend and Gartrill, and then also Inspiration Lane and Gartrill. And that is also another quite busy intersection that we'll be taking a closer look at for potential signalization.
I'm going to take a guess, it's not written here, but I think there's an interest by, perhaps, the person that wrote this. How about Addison and Aurora Parkway?
Yesterday, a question came in on that, and our traffic department indicated that they have gotten the development information in, and they are looking at evaluating it for a traffic signal. It's identified to potentially have one in the future, depending on what occurs around there.
Again, Cindy, could 35 miles an hour be used when the slowdown begins and then raised when lights are up? In other words, I think what they're saying is temporarily lower to 35.
Great. So, when we talked about the measured speed, that's what people are comfortable driving. So, lowering the speed limit artificially to 35 miles an hour is kind of like giving a false sense of security. People will not drive it at 35 miles an hour unless you have a police officer there, probably 24/7. So, the other side of it is, part of the reason that this traffic, this intersection meets the engineering criteria in the near future for a traffic signal is because of the speeds. On the good side, I don't believe there's a high accident. There was one accident here in our review. So, keep driving safely. You guys are doing a really good job, and we'll get that in there as soon as we can.
We've already touched on this, about the traffic control at Gartrill and Inspiration. You've certainly analyzed it, and you know that in sometime in the future, but that's not pertinent to us. "Why do the light poles have to go on the south corners versus north where the caissons would not affect the tunnel under Gartrill?" In other words, is there only two lights out there, or is there four, really? Four caissons?
Let me get to a graphic real quick, sorry. Okay. So, when you have a traffic signal, typically, you do have a caisson on every single corner. There would be the potential, there is an option for double mast arms, but out here, you're still going to be impacting one of these corners regardless. And from a maintenance standpoint for the city, that would be problematic. We don't typically have double mast arms, so in the event that something failed or there was an accident that knocked a pole over, it would be extremely difficult for us to get back out and put something in place temporarily while repairs were being made. So, yes, you could do a double mast arm, but no matter what, you're impacting that side.
Okay. The last thing is this. When we started this journey at the Board of Directors, it was consequential to the election that the Eagle Bend Metro District had held, and we had supported the $500,000 ballot question that said we were concerned enough about this intersection or the traffic on Gartrill Road that we wanted them to support that. We have the President of the Metro Board, Larry Moore, sitting up here. We have the Vice President of the Metro Board, Dave Gruber, George Aralano. I don't see Ed or Rex in the audience, if they are. All of those, with the exception of Dave, are residents of HEB, and they have been and continue to be a major supporter based upon your decision to invest in this traffic safety device. The last thing is this. In concert with that, the image out here for a long time that I have heard, and you have all heard it, is that the City of Aurora would never listen to us. It was always never, no how, no way. And I can tell you that our experience in working with the assistance of Council Member Borgen and Dave Chambers' department has been that they listened, and the council heard us. You did your part, and they did their part. So, as you have a chance to talk about what it's like to work with the City of Aurora, I would hope that you would keep that image in your mind. It is not that we work with this autocratic, no way that they care about us, organization, because I think that we can all see that this outcome shows that they do. So, I'd like to hear a round of applause. So, I'd like to hear a round of applause for the City of Aurora.[1785.71][1785.71][applause]